Getting to order. Good evening and welcome. Tonight, we have, as usual, with us Ryan Kaeth from K E R M, Cage U S Radio. So this is being broadcast live on the local radio stations. This will also be placed, this meeting will also be placed up on YouTube. We also have with us here this evening is Cindy Shealy from the Torrington Telegram. This is Tuesday, August 15th, 2023. This is the 16th council meeting of the year and the second meeting in August. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance, and I've asked Councilman Kelly to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is the mayor's informational items. We are on the downhill side of summer. We're going into fall. We have had a lot of moisture this summer, which resulted in greener, faster growing lawns, and a bumper crop of weeds. Again, I would ask the landowners and residents to work hard to keep up with your lawns and with the extra weeds to avoid a visit from the city code enforcement officers. Public schools open again on Monday, August 21st. Pedestrian, bicycle, and school bus traffic will greatly increase. Please take extra care with all the increased traffic, both vehicles and pedestrians. As always, please slow down and please avoid using your cell phones while driving. As summer ends and fall begins, we please continue to enjoy our municipal swimming pool, golf course, parks, and many ball fields. Please note that the last day of our municipal pool, the last day that the pool will be open is Saturday, August 19th. Crews will be out this weekend painting crosswalks and parking spaces on Main Street, the avenues near Main Street, and over to A and B Streets near the downtown Main Street. We hope to have as little disruption as possible to Main Street businesses. Please enjoy the rest of your summer. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda, which includes the meetings from August 1st, 2023. I have a motion from Councilman Patterson to approve the consent agenda, which includes the meetings from last council meeting, or the minutes from last council meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Victorin. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the August 1st, 23 council meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that consent agenda is approved. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. And what I would ask for is a motion to approve the agenda as set forth with the addition of the council considering Resolution Number 2023-11, which is a resolution authorizing submission of a federal mineral royalty capital construction account grant application to the slipboard on emergency basis for a VAC truck. I would ask for a motion to amend the agenda to add that as item 1A, the first item under action items.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to amend the agenda as presented to include the, as item 1A, the emergency MRG grant, 2023-11.
I have a motion from Councilman Deal. Do I have a second to his motion?
Second.
Now, a second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All right. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented with the amendment as stated by Councilman Deal, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by saying nay. That agenda is approved as amended by Councilman Deal. Thank you, gentlemen. The next item on the agenda is what we call the public forum. There is a, for future information, there is a box up here by Councilman Victorin, a black box. If you fill out a form prior to the meeting, you may address the council for a period of two minutes. That's a time for the speaker to let us, let the council know what they're concerned about. The council will listen, but no action will be taken. So in the future, that's available if you want to address city council. Next item on the agenda is an information item. It is Kurt Ezic, and I hope I pronounced that correctly or close enough.
I'll bet.
And, and I have talked to Kurt. He has to be placed on the agenda. He wants to give us information on how the Elk Echo Cycle Recycling Center is going. And I told Mr. Ezic that we would listen to him and maybe have some questions for him, but this is for information and no action will be taken. So, welcome to the podium.
Well, thank you. What would you like to know?
Well, what do you want to tell us?
Well, I moved up here. You know, you can't choose where you're born, but you can choose where you live. And I really enjoyed this area and, and I watched the recycling through DSI for many years and then saw it dissolve and then saw how Gary tried, in the city, tried to take it over and saw it dissolve. And I spent two years trying to put together a business plan to figure out how I could make this thing work. And one of the things was they were going to look at leveling that building, and I like repurposing. So, that's a great old building. So, you know, working with Ed Hawley and Randy Adams and then Kelly Matlock up with City, we tried to put all this thing together. And what I'm looking for is, it's a nonprofit company that I started. I was retired for five years and got bored, so I had to do something different again. But what we have, I built my business plan based on, for those two years of cardboard going for $180 a ton. And I needed, figuring this all out, I needed to make a bail a day. And I would cover my costs and the rental of the building and everything. Well, cardboard for the last year has been $35 a ton. In January, it was zero. And so, there's not much income right there. And so, I have re, I have 35 dumpsters out within the city that I pick up on my own time, my fuel, pick them up, bring them into town. I have two employees that we put in three hours a day, six, six hours a day with the two of them, of baling the cardboard and all the paper products that we're getting. I, I accept paper, all the paper products, cardboard, steel cans, and aluminum cans. So what's happening now with this business model, I went out and, and economic development has been a great help for me. They made my first year really happen. And, but I've had to re-examine my business model, and now I am now charging for the use of those dumpsters. So I've gone to McDonald's, Maverick, the hospital, E W C, and now I am charging $10 a dump for the dumpster, $40 a week, just to start covering my costs. Cardboard is slowly coming up. I'm making this thing, it's not quite covering its cost yet, and that's what I've come to council for, is I've rented a building from you that you were going to repurpose or you were going to level about three years ago. You don't own the land underneath it, but you have, you pay the railroad for the lease. And I covered the lease of your agreement. That was something that we put together with the city. And the utilities that I'm looking at is if there's a possibility that, I have no problem with paying for the electric because that's what I'm using, because I have three electric big presses in there that are smashing the cardboard. But if we could defer the water sewer and the trash collection, which that all adds up to about $160 a month. I've saved the landfill over 150 tons of material of just cardboard and then 50 tons of steel. So we're about almost 300 tons that I've kept out of your landfill. So that's what I'm looking at is, is just the defer of those three utilities. I have a bathroom in there and we use it, we don't use 100 gallons. And, you know, the dumpster is, is just a byproduct of what people are throwing, giving to me. So that's what I'm looking at doing. I want to take this thing, my next goal on this is getting this thing up and going. It's doing very well. This is my 16th month at it. The prison is one of my supporters. The, the city owns the semi-trailer that used to be parked out there, and now it's parked up at the penitentiary. And they, they fill it for me, and then every five to six weeks, I have a truck that I have to pay for, go up and pick it up, bring it down, empty it, and take it back up. So that's just another one of the expenses that, it all adds up a little bit. So if I can take a little chunk out of each one of those, I have the fellow that's driving the truck is volunteering his truck time, which helps. I'm going to go up and renegotiate with the warden. When we first started, and that was really funny, with Braden, we went up and he said, he told the four items, I said, I want to do the paper products and the steel and cans. And he said, how about plastic? And I said, I don't want to do plastic. I just not set up for it. It's not affordable. He goes, son, it's all or none. So you don't argue with the warden. So that's what I'm up again, that's what I'm asking the council for, is to look at it and waive the three, the $160 a month. Just helps me out. And trying to keep that landfill empty.
And so, what's the price for cardboard, for recycled cardboard now?
I'm getting 35 a ton.
And what was it before?
180.
It's gone down that much?
In a year's time.
Okay. Is 35 the lowest it's gone?
It went to zero in January.
Okay.
It was trash in January.
So it's on its way back up?
Yeah, slowly. But I have the ability. I've, I've stockpile. I can do about 400 bales that I've kept in that building, and I just dumped another 42 bales last week. They're going down to El Paso, just, just to keep the room available inside that building. I'm now starting to, I bought a, another press to do paper. We kind of had a little fun thing with, I have a vertical press, and you fill it full of your cardboard, and they put it under compression, open up the door and put baling wire on it, and then relieve it, and it makes a badger string. Well, we tried that with newspaper. It went from you to the end of that wall. It just flowed out like corn. So it takes another press to do that type of paper. And I have one that I picked up as a recycle. I'm trying to put it into production now. So the, my end goal here is I want to, I would like to recycle glass. Glass is a product that doesn't have to leave to be reprocessed. You grind it, make sand out of it. And I just ground some here last week on an old corn mill. And Gardi over at the golf course were experimenting with it on the green because they top dress their greens with very fine sand. And this is very fine sand. It's, and what's really quite amazing is it absorbs water, where sand lets it, it saturates or glows through, but the glass absorbs it. And you talk to agronomists, and a lot of your polymers that they put in for planting have glass in it, and that's what it do and absorb in the water. So we're going to be playing with this glass on the green, but it takes a lot of bottles to make a yard of glass. 5,400.
Okay.
So I want to take, and that's what I'd like to do is, the next step is, once I get this thing up and making some extra, covering the costs, is to expand it to receiving glass.
Okay. And right now, you're out there, you work there, and you have a driver that's volunteering his time?
I'm volunteering my time.
Okay.
About six hour, eight hours a day. But I have two employees that I bring in three hours a day. And then I have a truck driver that has his truck that's volunteering to go up and get the, the truck from the prison.
And he's volunteering his truck and his time?
Mm-hmm. He's a nice neighbor. That's what you have neighbors for.
All right. Councilman, do you have any questions for Mr. Azovic?
What is the steel and aluminum price?
Oh, it's, it's a commodity to like everything. Aluminum right now, I just took a truckload of aluminum, took $900 aluminum yesterday to Langer. So it's 50 cents a pound. Steel is, it's up and down. Right now, it's at 110 a ton. So I, with the steel can, I don't know if you've seen my, my wall of cans coming, if you go down and look right across from Thrifty's across the tracks, or I have a, that's where I put my cans and bale them. It's kind of an art deco thing. But it's $110 a ton right now. You know, six months ago was 160. So it's, it's a commodity with all of these products. You're just playing, playing the market and holding, selling high and try not to do the farmer. Buy high and sell low. Because sometimes it does.
You've been doing this for 16 months now, right?
I started April 22nd, April 2022. So I just had my first anniversary last April.
But you're not doing plastic, right?
No, plastic.
And you said you had-
The, the only plat, I'm not advertising, I'm taking.
Says you had two employees. Do you pay them?
Yep. Yep.
On the cardboard, is that $35 a ton FOB, the recyclings facility?
That's what I get, that's my check.
They pick it up and pay the freight?
Yeah. Yeah. So what happens, I'm dealing with a broker out of Denver, and they broker all over the United States for the different products. And I call, he calls me, it's the seventh of every month, first of the month. And he says, hey, this is where it's going. I'll give you 35 a ton. You got all month to make your decision. And I said, no, I need to get rid of some space. I need to make some space. So he had a truck in two days sitting up there, and it's one way to El Paso. And that's where all the cardboard goes from Main Street Market. It all goes down to the same mill in El Paso. So the steel and the aluminum, I take to different places. I can go to Greeley or Scotts Bluffett, just play in the market wherever is giving me the best. And then glass, it doesn't have to leave. Just crush it and put it on the ground. So you just got to figure out a market for it.
The best market you figured is for golf course greens?
For right now, because they're my neighbor.
All right. Any other questions? Well, we appreciate your coming before us, and we will take your concerns into consideration. I thank you, sir.
I appreciate the time, and thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right. Next item on the agenda, we are into action items, and I've labeled that 1A, which is this consideration of this resolution to submit an emergency mineral royalty capital construction account grant. Mr. Troxel, are you back there?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to come up and maybe answer some questions about the VAC truck?
Mayor and council, Ms. Sylvia beat me to the punch today. She contacted Joe Johnson Equipment in Denver, where we sent the truck to get looked at and possibly fixed or whatever. And she essentially didn't get an answer. I'll read from that email. She called Travis at Joe Johnson Equipment to get status update on our VAC truck. Per Travis, the truck is in the shop. They haven't really dug into it yet. He said they're trying to figure out the situation with the chassis, and they may need to resource their options out of Canada for that. He also mentioned that they are trying to figure out if they are going to have to do framework before they can drill down and compete, complete, excuse me, drill down and complete an estimate of the repair. As of this time, he, he said he really couldn't provide a timeframe as to when he believes the inspection or the estimate will be complete. That says a lot right there.
So you can't even get a time for the inspection, let alone a time for when it could be repaired?
This, this is, this has probably been my worst ever dealing with any insurance company, period. You know, it's, they don't allow for rental. They first, we got it in writing, should talk to Jim about this. We got it in writing first. They totaled the truck. And then all of a sudden, we get notice that, hey, we got a new adjuster back into the picture. And he thinks the truck can be fixed, and he never even came out to see it. I sent him the same pictures that we gave the last adjuster.
So all they've done is look at photos and narratives about it. They haven't actually come and inspected it?
Yes. This is going to be the first thorough, actually, they were here and inspected it once, also on site. We paid for that trip. And then the, the new adjuster requested that it be sent down there to Joe Johnson Equipment so they can thoroughly evaluate it. I, I know you all know how important that truck is, and even this rental truck, we, it's been running its tail off. I told you at Staffing, we had a hell of a Friday. We had three leaks, water leaks Friday. We had our fiber guys up by the hospital drill through it, 8-inch water main at 6 o'clock Friday night. We were there till 11 o'clock patching that main. We had a leak on Hillcrest, and then we had to open up Panhandle Co-op because they have a leak in their gas station. So we had to open up the curb stop to get the water shut off. We use that truck, like I said, for water leaks, for potholing. We use it for the sewer work, of course, jetting, cleaning the lines. And even more so now, I just got to thinking about it tonight, with all this fiber going in around town, it's going to be more critical that the city have a VAC truck to do potholing in the future. Otherwise, the water department will be ripping those fiber lines right out of the ground because they're in our right of ways now. Right where the curb stops are is, they're running that fiber line right down beside them.
And Tom, not only the uses you just described, but you can keep up with your maintenance schedule, right?
Exactly. That's more critical than anything else.
Say that again?
I said that maintenance schedule is more critical than anything else because all that information I presented to you guys before about the insurance requirements. They want to know how much we clean per year, total footage, et cetera, et cetera. If we do have a backup, you know, somebody's line backs up or, or our line backs up and floods some basements, they're going to be Johnny on the spot, and they're going to say, when was the last time that line was cleaned?
So this, this truck's in use all the time?
All the time.
And can you remind us how much we're paying for the rental truck?
11,000 and change. It's close to 12,000, I believe, a month.
Per month.
So we really need your support on this emergency MRG. I mean, it's going to be, it's not the first time we've applied for them, but it's going to kind of be unusual one for a VAC truck.
Well, frankly, this is an unusual set of circumstances, where you had the wreck and the issues with the insurance company and getting adjusters to look at it. One, I'm telling you, it's totaled, then another one come in and say, and no, it's 80% or something.
Yeah.
And repairable or, so there's some special circumstances here, too, that you don't ordinarily see.
Yes, sir. So.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Troxel? Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Troxel?
Tom, what, what, would you be able to purchase the rental that we're using right now?
They won't let me purchase that one. They're building one right now. That company. Let me just put it this way. Through this whole fiasco, this whole instant VACter, the company that we've always kind of stood by for the last couple trucks, wasn't much help to us at all. So this new company, they said, we got a rental, we'll get it to you as soon as we can. They had the best rate, we got the best rate for the city, cheapest rate, and then he says, we'll see what we can do about getting you a truck as soon as we can. We didn't know, you know, we didn't know how this was going to take place, but we were thinking the worst. So they quoted us, they quoted us a truck already.
Is that the 406,000?
So the grant pays for 75% of the purchase? The total purchase would be 546,000, or 542,141 dollars. So the amount of the grant is 75%.
Did they give you an expected delivery date?
I said in September.
Wow.
Which is unheard of in these times.
For the new one.
So he wouldn't be stuck with the rental cost for a long period of time?
Right, right.
Is it the same style of truck?
Yes, yes.
As the rental or as the original?
The rental.
Which, talking to you, you guys might get better than the other one anyway?
The operators do, yes.
What insurance company is this?
That's a good question.
Gentlemen, any further questions for Mr. Troxel or Mrs. Strachey?
I, I don't have a question, more or less a comment, but I think it's, it would be prudent for the city to look into the, going through this whole situation, the need that we should probably have two trucks. I realize the cost and all of that, but I, I just think that when you have one down and you're without it, I mean, granted, we have this rental, but if you didn't, given the summer that we've had.
Yes, Mr. Victor, and I agree 100%. We need your support, your town council's support, to get the stormwater utility off ground, and that would even more so justify the two trucks. Is it storm sewer maintenance is really laxed? It's not a high priority as far as maintenance. It's, when I started here, with my career, we were flooding basements everywhere in town. I mean, the sewer system did not get the maintenance it was getting, or should have been getting, it didn't have. We had a small VAC truck, I remember, but they didn't have staff that could keep up and keep running that truck. And, I mean, we went from, I don't know, probably six or seven insurance claims a year at least, to hardly any whatsoever. I mean, it was, it was pretty bad. We had lines where I knew we had to clean before Friday, before the weekend, or otherwise they would back up on the weekend.
But the camera truck helped considerably, too?
Yes. Camera truck has helped considerably.
And just a general comment, it wasn't that many weeks ago that we, where I live, I know it was a spotty rain, but had over an inch of rain in 45 minutes, and according to the flood plain map, I'm right on the edge of the flood plain, but congratulations, the storm sewer system worked great and kept the water out of the basements.
We, matter of fact, we do have problems on that street. There's, there's a major trunk line goes down that street. Yeah, I think it's a 36-inch or a 42-inch storm sewer, goes right underneath the overpass.
I am out with my hoe pulling the.
Thank you.
Stuff off the drain.
When I have summer help during, you know, that's their job, is the storm drains during the summer, so. One of their many jobs, anyway. We'd appreciate your support on this, this grant.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve Resolution Number 2023-11.
I have a motion from Councilman Patterson to approve Resolution Number 2023-11, which is the MRG Resolution Authorizing Submission of a Federal Mineral Royalty Capital Construction Account Grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All right, I'll call for a vote on the stated motion and the second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that request, request of council for approval of that resolution is approved.
Just one question. When will this be submitted?
The deadline is Thursday, so I'll be working on it frantically to get it completed by Thursday, and then the meeting is October 5th. So it would be great if we could go down to the slip during that meeting.
October 5th is the slip?
In the interim, Mr. Mayor, do we need to consider putting a purchase order in?
I, the question was from Councilman Deal was, in the interim, while we're waiting for the feedback from the Slipboard, do we need to put a purchase order in? And I don't know if you can, go ahead, Mrs. Strachey.
With this in mind, we already entered into an intent to buy that truck, so they are going to hold it for us. Thinking that we were going to get money from the truck, settlement money, but now that we're not, we're, we'd like to go this route if we could.
So they're holding the truck for us?
Yes, they are.
Good question. Get some deal.
Well, we may still get settlement money depending on what the final outcome is.
True. Or they're going to fix it, which might take a year or more, and then we have an additional truck, which we probably could put to get used.
But we wouldn't be paying the rental of $11,000, though.
That's what we're really going to be saving here, is the $1,200 a month.
With that, are we on, are we on month two of that agreement?
Yes. And I was going to say, too, with his question, you know, we could probably add another month of rent, too, to see what the outcome is in October.
And there will be a council meeting soon enough that we could make a decision at that point after we hear from the Slipboard?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Troxel. All right. Council will now be leaving regular session and will now convene as a Board of Adjustment. Item number one on the agenda as a Board of Adjustment is the request for approval by Amy Peterson and Dale Munt Jr., who are requesting a conditional use permit to operate an in-home daycare in a residential zone. The property is located at 142 Camino del Rey, so I will now open this up for public hearing on that item. Are there any, well, let me talk to, just a moment, sir. Mr. Estes, do you have any comments first?
Thank you, Mayor. This did go through the Planning Commission last week, there were very few questions on this, no neighbors at all. There were some concerns about the narrowness of that street, because it is the narrowest street section in town, they are 40-foot wide right of ways. So we decided, along with the owner, that it's, right now, doesn't think it's going to be a problem, but if somewhere down the road there seems to be a problem, we'll deal with it as best we can, with probably Ed Holly's help, and see if we can mitigate that, if it becomes a problem. So the staff would recommend approval, and I'd stand for any other questions.
Council, any questions for Mr. Estes?
The, just a comment, the only, and I should disclose, I, I'm your neighbor down the street, I live at 172. Welcome to the neighborhood, I hadn't met you before, but it's, it's good to meet you. The only concern we had heard is from one neighbor who was concerned about the narrow streets and the traffic, and it's a concern we all share, that is a very narrow street. Sometimes you have cars parking on both sides, I wonder how they're going to get a fire engine down there at times. A lot of kids live in there. Daycare or not, there's a lot of kids living there, but I, but I'm supportive of this, I think daycares are definitely and desperately needed in the community, and I believe there's another daycare straight down the street, just 300 feet or so from this location, that already exists.
On Camino del Rey?
Uh, no, it's on the cross street. Right down. Yeah, right, right there.
Yeah, Anderson's have one right there.
Yeah, Anderson's have one there.
This is a 60-foot right of way, though, and then it turned into 40-foot right of ways, so.
Can you, can you show me the, the property in question?
I believe it's right there.
Yes, sir.
Actually, it's right there, Dale, with the driveway?
No, that one's the, my neighbor Chris, that's the one, yes, that's the one.
Oh, there is a driveway there, yeah.
Yes, I drive around to Chris.
It is a narrow street, but I think if there's a problem, we'll deal with it, and we don't surely want to get nobody hurt, so, yeah. We'll sure keep an eye on it, and I'm sure Mr. Munt would tell us if there's an issue.
Mr. Munt, I see you back there raising your hand, do you want to come up and address the council?
No.
That's fine.
I think he has most of the daycare kids with him tonight.
Is that who they are? Okay. Well, I would agree with what Councilman Patterson said, I think that there's a shortage of daycare entities, facilities in this town, and, and some are closing and some are opening, and I think they're critical to this community to have, you know, an adequate amount of daycare for folks, so. I think that's good that we are having applicants for what I'm calling in-home daycares here in Torrington, so.
Seems like we get a lot, a lot of these requests, and nobody ever has a complaint or any comment about it. How are the people notified surrounding the?
I have to send a letter to everybody within 140 feet of the property, and then it's noticed twice in the paper as a public hearing.
And you send out the notices and nobody ever gives any comment?
Very seldom. Every now and then you might.
All right.
But this is a conditional use permit, means, means when that property is sold, it can't be used as daycare again, right?
That is correct, Councilman. If they do sell the property, it does not transfer with ownership.
That conditional use permit is personal to the owners.
Correct, Mayor.
Doesn't flow with the property.
That's correct.
Has the applicant been approved by the Wyoming Department of Health?
By now, we know your name, but if you would just state your name for the record?
I'm Dale Munt Jr. She comes from Wheatland on the 22nd, so next Tuesday, and then the State Fire Marshal, she is setting up a meeting with him for him to come visit it as well. She sent us a list of guidelines of everything, with the yard, inside, everything like that, animals, and I think we've pretty much, excuse me, covered everything, so we're just waiting for her to get there on Tuesday, so.
And that's the last part of that process, is she literally comes out and does the inspection?
Yes, sir. And that'll make us state certified.
You're allowed to have how many non-family?
We can have up to 10. And then, I, up to 10 with just my wife, right now, if she brought in help, I think it would be up to 15. But we just plan on doing 10.
That's sometimes where we get into an issue, is when down the road and they put more kids and they get more help, and then there's staff parking that takes up loading zones, so. We have to be careful, cautious of that.
But the intent for right now is just, your wife will be the, run the daycare and have any higher doubt?
Mr. Mayor, if there's no further questions, I would move to approve the conditional use permit as presented.
Mayor, you need to call for public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you, did you have anything else?
No, sir.
Yes, we are in.
Thank you.
Public hearing. Are there any other comments from the public before we move on? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and now, Councilman Victorin, I would entertain your motion.
Again, Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the conditional use permit as presented in Action Item 1A.
All right, I have a motion from Council, Councilman Victorin, do I have a second? Second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion, gentlemen?
The only problem is it can't be, can't be 1A because we already have 1A.
One, diminutive A.
This is just public.
The conditional use permit for Amy Peterson and Dale Munt Jr.
Dale, your second would approve that.
All right. So, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the conditional use permit set forth in, under public hearing A for Amy Peterson, Dale Munt Jr., signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that conditional use permit is approved. Now I'm on small B. The Goshen Care Center Joint Powers Board is requesting approval of the preliminary plat acting as the final plat of the Evergreen Plaza subdivision, and I will now open that item up for public hearing. Mr. Estes, any comments?
Yes, sir. Just a little background history on this project, as you know, that used to be the old county hospital project. Over the years, the building of the hospital, the building of the original Evergreen, none of the plating or legal work was ever kept up on, which is not uncommon. So one of the projects that Mr. Taylor and his staff did when this got all done, they replatted it in one single lot subdivision, put all the easements, right of ways, and stuff that we need to be in there correctly. There was really no comments at the Planning Commission. Mr. Taylor is here, if you'd like to speak to him, but the staff would also recommend approval on this, it's just more of a housekeeping deal, cleaning stuff up for us, a lot, it's getting our stuff, our utilities where they should be.
And I just want to understand it, repeat what you said, that will now be one lot?
Yep. One lot in Evergreen Plaza subdivision.
All right, do you have any further comments, Mr. Estes?
No, sir.
Mr. Taylor, do you want to address council?
I will answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you for coming up, if you'll state your name for the record.
Bob Taylor.
Counsel, do you, you gentlemen have any questions for Mr. Taylor?
That property has began its history in about 1946 when a fellow named Coy started the subdivisions on the east side of town. Then it was re-subdivided in 1950, and then it was re-subdivided again later than that in 1950-something, and then the construction took place and some materials were put in. It's a mess, and it needs cleaned up. And hopefully, we have accomplished that.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Taylor?
There is a water main or sewer main through that property, is there?
That's correct, and we provided an easement for that.
Where does that run?
Right there. There's a water and a storm sewer both, and it goes... It's in a gap. There's a connecting link there between the main building. It's not under the main buildings.
So there would be some access if needed?
Yes. There is an easement through there. There's also an electrical easement up there at the northeast end of that. There's transformers, and their power supply is at that location. We provided that easement also. There was historically an easement. There used to be an alley that went through to the east of that from the north to the south. There's sanitary sewer and some power in that. There's also an easement for that, and then there was a new sewer line. The old sewer line around the old hospital went around it, and here, oh, five, six years ago, I don't know.
Right before construction.
Right before construction, there was a new sewer line that goes straight through there, and there's also an easement for that now.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public who would like to comment on this item? Seeing no takers, I will close the public comments and close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I would move to approve the Goshen Care Center Joint Powers Board plat...
I have a motion from Councilman Patterson to approve the final plat for the Goshen Care Center Joint Powers Board as presented. Do I have a second? Second from Councilman Kelly. Do I have any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving that preliminary plat for the Goshen Care Center Joint Powers Board signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that plat is approved. That item is approved. Next item on the agenda as board of adjustment is a request to approve First Congregational Church approval of the final plat of Coy's Edition, second filing, and I would open that up for public hearing, but I'd call on Mr. Estes.
Mayor, thank you again. This is Coy's First Edition, second filing. This is zoned R3. This is a four lot, lots three through six, block five of the Coy's First Edition. This is the First Congregational Church. Been there for 100 years. This is how it sits currently. This is all the four lots that they own. This is, of course, the church and the house that they own. From my understanding, they no longer would care to be landlords. What they'd like to do is split this right here and make this Lot 1 and that Lot 2, therefore getting rid of lots 3, 4, 5, and 6 and renumbering those. So this is how it's going to sit if it's approved. You can there see the boundaries of the new lot. Originally, I think the church thought, you know, since they lost all their parking when the county hospital was there, they used that a lot. They kind of struggled, so they thought about using that for a little bit of a parking lot, but I'm not sure that the board of the church is ready to do that because they're not going to gain a lot of parking here. It's going to be hard to get in and out of. There's some issues. There could be some possibilities of maybe further additions for the church, like storage buildings of, you know, that type of thing. But Mr. Taylor's here and Mr....
Fagler?
He's going to make me sad. Mr. Fagler's here. Let's see. Mr. Fagler's here if you'd like to speak to somebody from the church.
Do you have... Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Estes before we go to others? Seeing none. Mr. Fagler, would you like to address council on this matter? And again, we know who you are, but please state your name for the record.
Yes. Good evening. Steve Fagler. I guess this has been kind of over a long period of time. The church hasn't used that for parsonage for 12 to 15 years, and we've found that it's not good for a church to be in the rental business. A lot of conflicts. So we've decided to sell off that parsonage, and doing so, there was a two-car garage attached to it that laid off one of the parcel... Parts of the lot, and to clean the thing up, we need to replat it and make the backyard smaller on the proposed lot. Like I said, we do not have a specific purpose in mind. Our board has went back and forth on what to do. Probably can only gain about six parking spaces, so maybe it's not worth the expense that it would take to do that. So at this point, we're looking for some kind of future use of it or leaving it as is.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mr. Fagler? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Does any other member of the public wish to speak for or against this item on the agenda? Seeing no takers, I'll close the public comments and close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion on item small C under the public hearing set forth on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve the First Congregational Church request for a final plat of Coy's First Edition, second filing.
I have a motion from Councilman Deal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Victorin. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All right. A call for vote. All those in favor of approving the First Congregational Church approval of the final plat of Coy's First Edition, second filing, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that request for approval of the final plat is approved.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And now, council will return to regular session. Next item on the agenda is a special event permit. Sarah Young with the Open Barrel Brewing Company is requesting a special event permit for a cornhole tournament event to be held on August 19th, 23, from 2:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. The permitted area will be confined to the alley and east row of parking spaces in the city of Torrington parking lot behind the Open Barrel Brewery as specified on the map submitted with the application. And Chief Johnson is not here, but I would call on Chief Connolly. Do you have any... Or Assistant Chief Connolly, do you have any comments on this?
I know Chief Johnson has gone over this pretty thoroughly with the applicants, and he did not see any problems with it, as listed in his notes in the packet there. Everything is going to be enclosed with snow fence, and the only entry into it will be through the actual front of the business where course IDs will be checked and that sort of thing.
And I... Assistant Chief Connolly, I think the main point on this is any alcohol to be sold will be sold within the Open Barrel Brewery, right? None will be sold outside.
Yeah, that's under item three, the catering permit. But that is... Sorry, not the catering permit, the open container permit. That is correct. Any alcohol will be sold, will only be sold inside the business, and then the open container permit in number three will allow people to carry it out to the cornhole tournament area, which will be monitored by their staff as well, but no alcohol will be sold outside
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Assistant Chief Connolly?
I would... If you're ready, I would make a motion to approve the special event permit.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Patterson to approve the special event permit set forth in item number two for Open Barrel Brewing Company. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the special event permit for Open Barrel set forth in item two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. That special event permit is approved. Next item on the agenda is connected with that. It's an open container permit. Sarah Young with Open Barrel Brewing Company is requesting an open container permit for a cornhole tournament event to be held on August 19th, 23, from 2:30 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. The permitted area will be confined to the alley and east row of parking spaces in the city of Torrington parking lot behind the Open Barrel Brewery as specified on the map submitted with the application. And I would again call on Assistant Chief Connolly just for some brief information on that.
As previously discussed, the entire area will be enclosed with a snow fence and will be monitored by the Open Barrel staff to make sure that no containers left that area, and they would only be allowed to go back and forth from the cornhole tournament to
And they will police it themselves, right?
Yes, that's my understanding, is that they will have staff out there to make sure that no containers leave that area.
All right, gentlemen. Any further questions for Assistant Chief Connolly? Not, I entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the open container permit.
I have a motion from Councilman Victorin to approve the open container permit as set forth in item three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Kelly. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the open container permit as set forth in item three for Open Barrel Brewing Company signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that open container permit set forth in item number three is approved. All right. Next item on the agenda is item number four, a special event permit. Doug Mercer with Scotts Valley Street Rods is requesting a special event permit for a Classic Cars on Main Street event to be held on September 16th, 23, from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The applicant is requesting approval to close the public street on Main Street between 19th Avenue and 21st Avenue and on the additional half-block areas to the east and west as specified on the map submitted with the application. The application is also... The applicant is also requesting to have the special event permit fee waived due to the fact that the event is a community event hosted by a nonprofit organization. So first I'll call on you, Assistant Chief Connolly.
I know Chief Johnson works extensively with Mr. Mercer on the plan for this as well. Essentially, they would be blocking off Main Street from Valley to 21st Street, you can see on the map there. Then they'd be doing half a block east and west on 20th, and then half a block east on 19th Street, just to the alley there, and that would all be blocked off for the car show. I know this car show always happened many years in the past and is a pretty well-attended event. In addition to that... Sorry, I lost my train of thought here for a minute. They also requested to have some bounce houses down here, down there. The indemnification agreement has been already signed and is included in the packet there. They've also checked with all of the businesses that would be affected by this, and as you can see on the sign-off sheets, they've got signatures from everybody acknowledging the impact, but I believe the part of what they propose is that the benefit will outweigh the impact of traffic due to increased foot traffic in the area for the downtown businesses, which they've all acknowledged as well.
Councilman Patterson?
Mayor, I have a procedural question, and this may be for the city attorney. As part of this, I think it's item seven, they talk about having a game and fish have an activity there where they would be discharging BB guns, which is a violation of city ordinance We could waive that, as I understand, for this event. Would that need to be a separate motion, or could that be incorporated into the approval motion?
When I talked to the chief about that, we were going to include that in the application, and I don't know if that happened. We had that discussion as doing an intentional waiver by this, by the government body for that time period of the permit.
As I look at that special events permit addendum that Councilman Patterson was talking about, 7B, it reads, "We would recommend and request a waiver of this ordinance for the time period of this event and only for the activities of the Wyoming Game and Fish trailer while supervised by Wyoming Game and Fish personnel."
That's what we're after right there.
So would it be appropriate in the motion to add that as part of the motion?
Yes.
Approve the motion and approve waiver of the BB ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Any... Gentlemen, any further questions for Assistant Chief Connolly? Seeing none, I see Mr. Mercer back there. Would you like to come up and visit with us?
Of course.
Again, please state...
I'd like to talk to you guys.
Please state your name for the record.
Do I have to tell my true name?
Yes.
Doug Mercer, representing Scotts Valley Street Rods.
What, do we got one? You have a low budget out there?
We have printed over 150 of those so far, and I have 10 left. I'm sorry, but we're a little short on flyers, plus the mayor's had one for a couple months. The chief and I have been working on this. Can you imagine our surprise and his surprise to find out that there's an ordinance against BB shooting in the city boundaries, which wasn't broached when they had that same trailer at Torrington Night Out two or three years ago? That's interesting. So we're going to do it all right this time, and we're... Go ahead.
I'd remind you to be a little careful. Wyoming is one of the, I think, of only two states that has no statute of limitations on any criminal offenses.
I'm sorry, I have to leave now? No statutes of limitations? That's scary. If it wasn't clear on your map, the only additional space that we're requesting this year is the half-block from Main to the alley on 19th, and we're attempting to guess how many cars are going to show up. This is our 50th year with Scotts Valley Street Rods, and we're trying to go big. We will have two bounce houses. We had one last year. Those bounce houses, the owner of them have the equipment itself insured. If there's any equipment failure, that part is insured, and the car club has a million-dollar umbrella policy on the event. So we think we're fairly covered on insurance. The other major difference this year, and they'll explain it better than I, economic development is here. They will have a concert, just like summer concert that they had this summer. summer, on 21st Avenue. And they'll be setting up sometime between 1:00 and 3:00. And when the car show tears down and leaves, we should be out of Main Street by 4:00. Their event will start when they decide. And I would be open to any questions.
So how many years has Scotts Bluff Valley Street Rods done this in Torrington?
In Torrington, I believe I was at the first one, and that was 1999. And I'm sure that Dennis Grubbs drove that because he had half of the city employees as volunteers. Before that, it was more in the Scotts Bluff gearing area, I think. But 1999 in Torrington. And most of the time, it was half a day on Main Street, move to a park, feed the participants, do a rod run, and then trophies. We, the club is down on personnel, and we can't staff a rod run currently. So we've been staying on Main Street, Torrington, for the entire show. However, next year, that will, we're going to change that up again. And we're not sure what we're going to do, if we're going to set up on a different street or half a day on Main and move to a park. Hasn't been decided. We're still planning for what we're doing September 16th.
And I know you don't know how many cars will show up, but what's your estimate?
Trust me, we never know how many cars are going to show up. Last year, we had 113 actually show with about three to five no-shows. We would hope to have over 120 this year. That's why we ask for the half-block on 19th, just in case, because we have a group that wants the entire half-block on East 20th. The people that do the Cars and Coffee once a month down at the theater say they can fill that entire half-block. So, and if they do that, that's fine. Cars are cars. But we need some extra space.
You don't want to turn people away.
No, never, never, ever. And of course, we would ask that the board, the council, waive the fee. That would be, well, you guys are sponsors, giving us money, then we hand it back. Hmm.
Well, let's just talk about that a minute. Let me just be the ornery guy in the room.
Okay.
So the justification for asking for a waiver of the fee, and the fee is 200, I believe, Sylvia?
Correct. Yes.
Is, as set forth on the agenda, Doug, is, ask that the fee be waived due to the fact that it's a community event hosted by a nonprofit organization. Okay?
That would be.
Now, I know we have waived fees. It seems to me, the last time we waived a fee, in my memory, was when we waived the fee for the special event permit for the Lions Clubs, in my memory, the last time.
Which was just a month ago, yeah.
A month ago. And, and, and the Kids Event Theater.
Okay.
And the reasoning for the Kids Event Theater was they weren't charging anything, anybody for anything. It was gratis, right? Okay. So you're not, are you charging anything to anybody, your organization, charging for anything?
There is a $25 entry fee for the car show. That's it.
But it's open to the public?
Yes. Yes. Visitors are free, of course. It's on Main Street, anybody that shows up. That's why we have it on Main Street. We get excellent walk-in traffic.
And so you're providing free, it's not free, but free to the public entertainment, the bounce house, the BB gun thing done by the game and fish?
Two bounce houses, the BB gun. We will also have a coloring contest for the kids, and we give prizes for that, as does the library. They have a Legos contest on the same day. It's, I guess, a little troublesome to drag all of their equipment down to Main Street. They do that function in the library on the same day we do our car show. Plus, we will have a band this year and a DJ. And the DJ is kept busy, not just spinning records, of course, but we give stuff away every minute of the show. And the kids, people that are running the kids' part of the show do the same thing.
Now, when you say a band, you guys will have a band?
We will have a band.
You're not talking about the band that, or are you talking about?
Correct. Economic Development will have, actually, they have two bands, and we will have one. Ours is geared toward gearheads.
Okay, that's just what I'm trying to get clear, Doug. So the concert that the economic development wants to do is totally separate from the band you're talking about?
Yes. Yeah.
And where's your band going to set up?
It's going to, looks like it's going to be in front of Pinnacle. We're going to burn a car parking place or two because of it, which is not a good idea, but.
And it's going to play, do you know what hours it'll be playing?
Our DJ will start at 9:00. He'll play for an hour, then the band cranks up for an hour, and the DJ comes back. Everybody gets a break, and we alternate like that until we close down at 3:00.
I think we've waived the fee for this car show for I don't know how many years now.
Every one. Well, no.
I've only been here 11 years, so I don't know.
The city used to contribute a much larger amount than what they do currently, and the fee was paid then.
All right. Any, gentlemen, any further questions for Mr. Mercer?
Are there most of the downtown merchants going to take advantage of this day? Do you know?
All but one.
Your question implies that they see it as an advantage. They don't. Most of them are closed. The bars, Grill House, Bread Doctor are open. Everything else is closed, with the exception of dress shops.
I think Vandal stays open though.
They close it too.
Do they normally close it too? They're not?
Yes.
So are the, as far as you know, are the businesses that are open on a regular Saturday going to be open for their regular hours on this Saturday?
As far as I know, but that's why we're thinking of changing it, because it does affect parking all day. And that's probably why it's, why the function started out half a day on Main Street. So the rest of the day would be cleared out, and any businesses that are open, which is not many, would have their parking places back. And we will be changing that for next year. Police chief and myself have already initially discussed it, that we'll be doing something different next year.
And likely a half a day on Main Street and a half a day somewhere else?
Or, like I said, move it completely. Maybe move it to a street that doesn't have so many businesses. But if you move too far away from downtown, then you don't get the foot traffic. So it wouldn't be too far away. It'd probably be a block.
Unless you don't have the off-street parking.
Correct.
Say again, Dennis?
Off-streets parking. Yeah. We won't burn that up.
All right. Any further questions for Mr. Mercer? All right. I would entertain a motion to approve the special event permit set forth in item number four with the addition, additional waiver of the BB gun ordinance for that day and a waiver of the fee. I would accept a motion that reads something like that.
So moved.
I'll just restate it. I have a motion from Councilman Kelly to approve the special event permit, set forth in item four with a waiver of the BB gun ordinance and a waiver of the fee. Do I have a second?
Second.
Now, second from Councilman Victorin. Any further discussion, gentlemen? All those in favor of the motion as stated signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. That special event permit is approved with the waiver of the BB gun ordinance and a waiver of the fee.
Don't shoot your eye out.
You know, Mr. Mayor, you have to go down and pick out the mayor's top prize, too.
I heard that. He's told me that.
Mayor asked to get his, pick his trophy.
Yeah, you have to choose the car, too.
I know, you already told me that.
Yeah. Not only present the trophy, but you need to choose the car.
I'll do that.
Okay.
I have one question, Doug, before you go.
Yeah.
The amount of out-of-town cars or out-of-the-community cars versus in-community, what is the?
It's more out-of-town. We have lots of cars in town, and they never come out of the garage or come out very seldom because they've done it. They've done it for years and years and years, and they're just, they want to go do something else, so they don't bring their cars out. Probably 60, 40, 70, 30 out-of-town. As far as the way is Casper, Lovell in Colorado. We have Colorado cars. And then, of course, Cheyenne and Scotts Bluff Gearing.
Okay.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is special event permit set forth as item number five. LeAnn Mattis of Goshen County Economic Development is requesting a special event permit for a Music on Main Fall Concert Event to be held on September 16th, '23 from 1:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. on East 21st Avenue from Main Street to slightly east of the City Lot, of the City Lot Five Restrooms. And I would first go to Assistant Chief Connolly.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Chief Johnson has worked extensively on this as well. This would just be a continuation of the concert series that the economic development did earlier in the summer. I believe this would be the last concert of the year, if I'm not mistaken. It'll be set up the same. It'll be conducted the same. They'll do the same noise level tests that they've always done at the previous ones. So far, those levels have not exceeded 70 decibels, according to Chief Johnson.
All right, gentlemen, any questions for Assistant Chief Connolly? Hearing none. Do I have LeAnn here? Do you want to come up and visit with us? And you've heard the drill. Please state your name for the record.
LeAnn Mattis.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for allowing me to come up this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
I have one that immediately comes to mind. There were two concerts that were canceled due to weather this year.
Yes.
And one was made up with National Night Out.
Correct.
Is this making up for the other one that was canceled earlier?
It is. It is, yes. You know, we had visited with Mr. Mercer a while back about his event and possibly teaming up at some point with that. And because of our cancellations, it kind of just fell into place this year. But yes, he, so his event is kind of going as planned, and then ours is just tagging on kind of to the tail end of theirs so that, you know, it is our hope to capture some of those out-of-town vehicles and stay, for them to stay overnight, stick around and catch another concert, and hopefully they get a hotel room and stick around. And of course, we want to highlight and show off our beautiful downtown, so.
And the previous two concerts that you had in that area this year went well?
They did. With the exception of our second, excuse me, the last concert that was held, the weather was a little iffy. We went ahead with it anyways, and the weather turned out to be just fine. But I think that kind of deterred people from coming out that evening. But I would say we probably saw around 300 to 400 folks downtown on two of those evenings. So we were able to have three events.
And, gentlemen, do you have any questions for Mattis?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a general comment. I know that there's been discussion in the past about this, and some people are not pleased. And I find it disheartening in a community of this size that something we do for economic development and to attract business that our business people can't get along. Competition is the heart of capitalism, and I think it's perfectly appropriate that economic development does something like this. I attended two of the concerts, and they were not excessively noisy. They were not rowdy. They were very pleasant events. And I just wish that, wish to make a statement that I wish we could be good neighbors with each other.
And I would echo that. Now, I also, you know, the city as the government has certain interests, right?
Absolutely.
We want safety.
Yes.
And we want alcohol containment.
Yes.
That's our main interest. And I know Chief Johnson has approved these before, and that's his issue. And it's up to the business folks to do what Councilman Deal said, work things out. Okay? It's not really up to council to get in the middle of that, so to speak.
Absolutely.
But as long as the government, us, are satisfied that you can do it safely and you can contain the alcohol, then that's pretty much not violating any other laws, then I think that's our true interest in these. We, all, all five of us here, want promotion in this town. We even want people to have a good time in this town, right? Because we think it's good for morale and business and just living in this community, so.
Absolutely.
I know, as far as I know, all the businesses in that area that may be affected by this have been at least notified of this event.
Correct.
So, and they knew that it was on the agenda tonight, everybody.
Yes.
There may be somebody out there, but I'm not aware of, that wants to speak against it. I don't know, but we'll see. Okay. All right. Gentlemen, do you have any other comments or questions for this man? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Is there anybody out there that would like to speak for or against the special event permit that we're discussing, the concert, Music on Main Fall Concert to be held on September 16th of this year? Don't see anybody. Okay. Gentlemen, if you don't have any further questions for Assistant Chief Connolly, I'd entertain a motion.
I would move to approve.
I have a motion from Councilman Patterson to approve the special event permit set forth in item number five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the special event permit set forth as item number five signify by saying aye. signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that special event permit set forth in item five is approved. Next item on the agenda is item number six, a catering permit. Jan Harvey with BZ Hospitality LLC is requesting, requesting a catering permit for a Music on Main Fall Concert Event to be held on 9/16/23 from 3:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. in the designated liquor service area established by the event's special event permit. Assistant Chief Connolly?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a catering permit for the fall concert that mirrors the previous catering permits that have happened at all the other concerts. During all these events, wristbands are provided to anybody to, who's of legal age to, to purchase alcohol. No alcohol is sold to anybody who does not have a wristband. We always have at least two TPD officers down there during this event, as well as all the economic development staff who monitors that very closely. So far, we've had zero problems with underage drinkers or anybody trying to take alcohol outside of the event area.
Okay, thank you. And it just, there's two PD, two TPD officers that will be on duty for that concert?
Specifically for the concert and then any on-duty police officers are encouraged to stop in whenever they have time, if they're not responding to other calls or taking care of other concerns.
And with the past concerts, that's been sufficient law enforcement presence?
Yes, it has been. I personally worked the last one myself and you can take a pretty central location and watch the entire event and all of the perimeter from one spot. So two officers is, has been plenty sufficient.
And it looks to me like this latest one is configured the same way as the prior two were?
Yes, it is. And there's a limited number of entrances and those entrances are closely monitored.
All right, is Ms. Harvey here? Don't see her. Gentlemen, do you have any questions for Assistant Chief Connolly regarding the catering permit on item six?
I would, I would just echo what Mr. Councilman Deal said earlier and Deputy Chief, also, Connolly also. I attended these events, the, the boundary is clearly established, everything is according to the law, it's well regulated, it's well run, so, no problems.
All right. Gentlemen, any further questions? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion on item number six, the catering permit for Jan Harvey on the Music on Main Street Fall Concert Event on September 16th, 23.
Make a motion to approve the permit?
I have a motion from Councilman Kelly to approve the catering permit, catering permit set forth in item six. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Victorin. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the catering permit set forth as item six on tonight's agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, that catering permit set forth on item six is approved. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the bills from August 2nd, 23 to August 15th, 23. Mrs. Strecker?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Attach your agenda, we're a list of bills, and then I handed out an additional set tonight for your consideration. I'd be glad to answer any questions you have at this time.
I have one question, it's probably for the Deputy Chief, because we just have to know. There was a tow charge from EWC to the city shop, what, to the PE account, do you know what that was?
Which, which?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's on the first set and it's about halfway down Butler's Auto Salvage, or second set, excuse me.
On page one?
On page one, George.
It just says charger.
Oh, yeah, one of our police department cars broke now and we had to get it towed to the shop because we had no other way of getting it there.
That answers the question, thank you.
And I'm glad you were asking a question, Deputy Chief, because the chief was grinning last Friday when I was chatting with him, when he told me he wouldn't be here, he would be taking his place.
Page five of the first set of bills for Massey Golf Car, for repairs to golf cart, is that one of ours or one of theirs?
We lease the cars from them. So yeah, it's one, it's one of our leases, I believe.
It's one we leased from them?
I believe so, yes.
So why are we paying for the repairs for it?
We repair them. I believe. It doesn't happen very often.
Then on page seven, Titan Machinery, $787 to replace the rocker switch, what was that for?
It's for streets, I don't know, do you know what that is?
It was for our new tractor to warrant the DEF system. Wonderful DEF. That's not a warranted item? No, sir.
I have a question on the second set, page six. WJRWY LLC, looks like it's a lot of charges to the airport about taxiway lights and I just wondered if that is for the project we approved most recently or more of the trouble that's been happening lately?
It's the trouble, just, and the reason I know that is it's charged to facility O and M, it's not charged to the project.
Okay.
So, I believe it's having to do with the gophers, possibly?
Does that resolve the issue? I was hoping that the Public Works Director was going to be here tonight, but...
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if it has or not. We can find out and get back to you tomorrow.
I'll see, I'll probably see him Thursday? Or is he out for the week?
Yeah, I, I think he is going to be here Thursday.
Depends on how his eyes go.
He's out for eye surgery, right?
If there's no more further questions on the bill, I'm making a motion to approve as presented.
I have a motion from Councilman Kelly on item number seven to approve the bills from August 2nd, 23 to August 15th, 23, as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilman Deal. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of, of item seven, approval of the bills from August 8th, August 2nd, 23 to August 15th, 23, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, item number seven, approval, approval of the bills is approved. I have number eight, public comment. Are there any members of the public out there who would like to make a public comment to council? I see. You may make a comment.
If I could.
Sure.
Recently, in my neighborhood, just up east of the college, there's been a number of new stop signs installed by the street department and universally, the neighbors have been appreciative of that, so I thought I, I would let Mr. Hawley know, a job well done, so. Yeah, they would, it's been overdue, there's been some kind of line intersections and some prob, potential problem areas that that seemed to take care of, so, they appreciate it.
I can tell from Mr. Hawley's expression, it's nice to be appreciated. And along those lines, I would like to comment, we talked about it briefly at the staff meeting, there is now a four-way stop on West E and 28th at the entrance and exit to the middle school. And I think that's an excellent addition. Mr. Hawley and his crew were quick in getting that set up and with the special red flags out to the side of the stop sign to give the public who was getting used to the idea the awareness of the presence. And I talked to Assistant Chief Connolly this morning and they will be patrolling that extra, especially when school starts here on Monday, August 21st, so. I think that's a good addition, too. And as always, not as always, but since it's been done, I've been reminding people, there's 17 new crosswalks in this town that stretch the length of the walking path that we try to keep everybody cognizant of and paying attention, Mr. Estes?
Mayor, you might remind people to push the button when they're crossing because there's a lot of people not using those buttons.
Right.
Especially the youth, they're just...
Crossing without stopping on bicycle?
Those lights really help.
They do help, so anybody out there listening who's a pedestrian, there is a button you can push on several of those intersections and it just adds to the safety of the pedestrians and the liability of the drivers, so, appreciate you doing that, so. All right, if they're, I see Fire Chief Petch back there, so of course I'm going to call on him. You want to come up and give us a report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Things have been a little busier last few weeks, but nothing major, knock on wood at this time, so, most of what we have had has been outside of the city limits with some grass fires and type stuff, so. Again, that can change anytime, but hot and dry this week, so that could change things a lot. Fuels are still present and nice and tall, so. But, just kind of reiterate, as somebody that works for the school district with the driving and everything, just everybody, please be careful coming up here with the change, starting back to school and everything, so. Don't want to be getting called to stuff dealing with those kind of accidents.
That's right, and while you're standing there, that horrible accident that was south of town on Friday evening with the motorcycle and pickup truck head-on collision, obviously this is outside our jurisdiction, but man, you just need to be so careful when you attempt to pass a vehicle on a too-late highway, you know, or you are in serious trouble. Just, everybody be extra cautious when it's legal to pass, but do it safely.
Ironically, unfortunately, however you want to look at it, that stretch has really gotten to be almost our most dangerous stretch where we respond to wrecks. I mean, in the last, what, four or five years, you think, six? I mean, we've been to a lot of nasty wrecks in that area within probably like a five-mile radius.
Lot of us around here refer to as Exley Flats. You get up the hill and get south town before you get Dehoder, right? That flat straight area.
Yeah, so, I mean, you wouldn't think, it's nice and flat, you can see a long ways, but unfortunately, it seems like that's where a lot of accidents occur for some reason, so.
Well, I think as Mr. Eddington's fond of saying, slow down. If people would slow down, then a lot of these would be avoided, so.
Any, do you think there'd be a correlation, obviously, like the mayor said, it's out of our jurisdiction, but if there's a correlation between when they increase the speed in that zone to 70, the increase in accidents have increased, accidents have increased?
I don't know if that's really correlation. I know that there was a couple of years, the sand blowing off the fields, visibility was a big problem, the fog is a big problem because of how it sits in that area. I'm not sure if you could correlate the speed to it or just impatient, you know, nowadays and everybody's in a hurry, you know, I'm not really sure if you could put one thing to, to what or why, so. And then I think if you look at district lines or whatever, it would be more the rural fire district, but our coverage area goes to about halfway to Dehoder, I would say, maybe a little farther, so. It's not city, but it's still our fire department coverage area, so.
I would guess that the sad reminder from Hawaii is how quickly fire fires are wind-riven can move.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it was, the Simmons Fire was what, 10 years ago or so now? Doesn't seem that long ago, but that was, you know, two hours, 25,000 acres with the winds and, but absolutely very sad about Hawaii because where do you go to get away from that, you know, unfortunately? But yeah, I mean, if you get the right circumstances, we could have a huge grass fire, I mean, in a very short period of time, truly. Especially with the fuels, being so tall, we, two trucks together, first one knocks it down, the second one cleans it up technically, but when the fuels are so tall, you can do that and you think you have it out and just the one little ember will start everything back up and you still have 24 inches of fuel to burn even though you burned 24 inches off already. So it gets to be somewhat more dangerous, you know, getting the trucks in there, going through those fuels, obviously is dangerous too, and then your flame height is quite a bit higher and everything, so it just makes it more exponential, you know, the danger.
So are, when people do controlled burns, if they're allowed to do them right now, I don't know, but they're supposed to check in, right? And let dispatch know that they're doing a controlled burn?
Yes. Perfect scenario is they would check the weather and find a day that's not very windy, going to be cool, maybe a little bit of rain, instead of 95 degrees, 20 mile an hour winds type thing, but we would ask that they just call Torrington Dispatch, let them know what they're burning, the location, when they're going to start, and then when they finish, call back again and tell them when they're finished. That way, somebody drives by on the road, they see flame over there, they don't see what they think anybody around, you know, most people are going to call it in. They do, dispatch can look at the board and say, yeah, this is our controlled burn, we don't need to call anybody. If it's not on the board as a controlled burn, they're going to page out fire departments, they're going to show up in force. Sometimes the people don't like that, it's controlled burn, it's not a big deal. Well, there's four trucks and people...
It's a big issue if you're going to be involved in controlled burn to let dispatch know.
Yes, very much so.
All right, gentlemen, any comments or questions? Well, Fire Chief Petch is up there. Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, we have completed all the items on this agenda this evening, so this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.